We're on the record. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Today is the twenty-second day of April. The time is nine o'clock. Board of Commissioners is in session. Mr. Daley and myself are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. Could you identify yourself for the record, starting over here? Go around.
Dale Myers, Ada County Development Services.
Michael Prin, Development Services.
Frank Davis, Development Services.
Brian Gilbert, Development Services.
Ben Devlin, Development Services.
Zach Kirk, Development Services.
Brianna Bustos, Development Services.
Doug Holton, Development Services.
Brent Moore, Development Services.
Brent Danielson, Development Services.
Kelly Ingram, Development Services.
Mark Perfect.
James Sullivan, Development Services.
Cecily Anton, Development Services.
Allison Crisp, Development Services.
Toni Crisp, Development Services.
Samantha Chapman, Development Services.
Bob Perkins, Not Development Services. Procurement.
Robin Swain, Procurement.
Amelia Haines, Development Services.
Alex Perez, Risk.
Kelly Ponarinan, Risk Management.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Realize you, guy.
Julianne Hagler, Risk Services.
Liam Lutz, Development Services.
Heath Rivordi, Clear Service.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Rebecca Alcala, Development Services.
Beth Mon, Treasure.
Well, thank you. I'm Perk, I'll read changes to the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we remove Resolution three zero eight eight and move to the emergency medical services district agenda for today. April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, open.
You're second the motion.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Carries, thank you. Okay, we now have recognition. I assume that's why some development services are there for the recognition. I'll read the recognition. Becky Alcala. Began her career with Ada County on April fifth, nineteen ninety-five, as a receptionist in development services, bringing with her seven years of experience from Santa Clara County, California, before making Boise her home. Within a year, she was promoted to Building Permit Specialist, a role in which she spent twelve years contributing to Ada County's growth, one permit at a time. During the two thousand and eight recession, Becky briefly transitioned to the prosecuting attorney's office as a receptionist for four months before returning to development services to continue her work as a building permit specialist. On March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, Becky advanced to Planning and Building Specialist, where she played a key role in streamlining application acceptance and building permit process. Recognizing her leadership and dedication, she was promoted as the department's first ever permitting division supervisor on September seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. Her tenure as supervisor was short-lived, however, as she was promoted to Office Administrator just one year later, on September sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Over the years, Becky has built strong relationships with colleagues, contractors, and the community. Longtime contractors still ask about her when visiting development services, eager to say hello and share memories. Some even recall their children growing up alongside Becky's boys on the sports field. Today, Becky continues to serve as Office Administrator, ensuring development services run smoothly while also caring for her husband and mother at home. She is not only the heart of her own family, but also a cornerstone of the development services work family. Her warmth and laughter fill the office, creating a welcoming and supportive environment for all. Becky's commitment to Ada County spans three decades, and her impact on development services is immeasurable. We congratulate her on this remarkable milestone and look forward to many more years of leadership and friendship. Congratulations, Becky. We appreciate your long service. Now, we'd like to, I know you have a lot of colleagues in here, and I'm sure you want to get them all in the photo, so we'll go out to the foyer.
Want to let Richard make a comment first?
Yes. Well, yeah, anybody else from Development Services want to make a comment? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, yeah, I'll just add, you know, it's been, it's been an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to associate and work with Becky for the last eighteen years. My very first assignment or, you know, a responsibility, I had the opportunity to sit directly across from Becky and had the opportunity to observe and learn from her as she interacted with clients. I think I watched hundreds, if not thousands, of individuals and property owners and community members come through our front door. And when they see Becky, their eyes light up. They sit down and have a conversation like they're catching up with a longtime dear friend, just based on her natural ability to establish strong relationships. This is just who Becky is. Like you said, Mr. Chairman, she fills our office with laughter and friendship. I've said in the past, she's like our older, wiser big sister that we can go to for essentially anything. She'll tell us how it is, and she'll share, you know, whatever advice, counsel, or wisdom she has. She's just one of those exceptional individuals who is one hundred percent authentic. And she makes life in development services that much more tolerable and real. And I just want to thank you, Becky, for all that you've done, for showing up today. And just congratulate you on just all you've been able to accomplish, all you've helped other, so many other people accomplish in the individual lives that you've touched and influenced throughout thirty, thirty years and throughout your service to your community here in the Treasure Valley. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, Ada County. I mean, you guys have been really good to me and my family. There's been lots of different situations, and you guys have always been there supporting me. So, Ada County has been really good to me, everyone. Thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you. Anyone else from Development Services or anybody want to congratulate you?
I think, just Mr. Chairman, almost one person for every year that she served is. So, I think that's a testament.
Well, it's nice to meet Richard's mentor.
Our mentor.
Oh, our mentor, okay. Well, if anybody else would like to say anything, feel free.
Now, Mr. Chair, I'll say, I don't think I've talked to a constituent yet who said that they had a bad experience with your department. And that speaks volumes, because I think, you know, this, it's generally always a hassle for people to get their development projects through. And you guys make it easy and probably relatively painless for some people. Maybe when they come before us in a hearing, we make it a little painful. But you guys, you guys have just managed to create this atmosphere where I think people appreciate, you know, the help that you guys can give them to help, you know, make their dream come true of building a home or a business in the Treasure Valley. So, thirty years is a big milestone, so thank you for everything you do.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, yes, thank you. It's, it is a milestone, thirty years. Many of you were in high school. Well, let's go on and take a picture. We'll give you a picture. Two items we need to, we have unfinished business we need to have a motion put back.
I move that we remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. First take up application two zero two four zero one nine zero zero, Z C D A M S P. Brittany Toreresco.
Toreresco.
Toreresco, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, both of these items, unfinished business item one A and B, are revised findings of fact. Both items were set over from the April ninth public hearing. This first one, if you recall, Toreresco was requesting approval of a contractor's yard south of Star. City Star has some interesting conditions that you elected to remove. I directed staff to revise the findings of fact and conditions, make sure that those conditions were not included. And staff has prepared that document and respectfully submits up your considerations this morning.
Okay. Any questions or discussions on this application? That we review the documents, there are three or four of them, actually, to do the whole thing. And we did remove those tiny, those conditions from what had been previously discussed. Any questions or issues? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion. I'll move to approve application number two zero two four zero one nine zero zero dash D C, Z C dash D A dash M S P, based on the revised findings of fact and conclusions of law.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? We had a hearing, and we removed two of the conditions that were placed. And I think it makes a, because they were kind of unenforceable, as I recall.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, now, we'll now take up application two zero two five zero zero two eight five A C V, Andrew Miller. I'll accept a motion. Do you want to explain it a little bit?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, do this again. It was set over from the April ninth public hearing. Mr. Miller, if you recall, was southeast of Meridian. He wanted to build a accessory structure within a setback and a little bit larger than the code allows. After, you know, hearing the evidence and testimony presented with no opposition from neighboring property owners, you voted to approve, direct the staff to craft findings that supported the approval, which we've done. And submit this for your consideration.
All right. As I recall, it was seven square feet.
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
All right, is there any questions or discussions on the issue? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve application two zero two five zero zero two eight five slash A C slash B, Andrew Miller, based on revised findings of fact and conclusions of law.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we have a couple of procurement items. The final ranking and award of R F P two five zero two eight, design bill for the Ada County Sheriff's Office Lucky Peak Radio Site.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Under unfinished business this morning, we have four items for your consideration, the first of which is R F P two five zero two eight, the design bill for Ada County Sheriff's Office Lucky Peak Radio Site upgrade. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluations of the proposals submitted, and we'd like to submit this letter with the evaluation team's recommendation.
Okay, if you could read the letter.
I'd be happy to. It's a letter dated April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding R F P two five zero two eight. Dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received four proposals for R F P two five zero two eight. Unfortunately, three of the proposals were found to be non-responsive, and one was over budget. Due to these circumstances, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to reject all the proposals for R F P two five zero two eight.
Okay, any questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept a motion to reject the R F P.
I'll move to reject the recommendation or accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and reject all bids for R F P two five zero two eight and direct staff to rebid.
On this one here, we're just going to go ahead and just reject all the proposals. I think the Sheriff's Office and Operations wants some time to take a look at this project and maybe bring it back next year.
Okay. All right, good enough. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, the motion is to reject all bids on R F P two five zero two eight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Our second item under unfinished business is the award of bid two five zero three nine, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Field Services Building Electrical Switchboard Replacement. And the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for this project, and we do have a recommendation letter for your consideration.
Okay, could you read the letter?
Yes, I'd be happy to. It's a letter dated April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two five zero three nine. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the two bids submitted for our, for bid two five zero three nine, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the bids for being non-responsive and to procure this project out on the open market.
Okay, and questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and reject the bids for project two five zero three nine and go out on the open market for this project.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
We now have next up award of bid number two five zero four four, Ada County Sheriff's Office Restroom Upgrades.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement, and the evaluation team has reviewed the seven bids received for bid two five zero four four and would like to submit this recommendation or award letter for your consideration.
If you can read the letter.
Yes, it's a letter dated April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two five zero four four. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two five zero four four to E K C Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Okay. Any questions or discussions?
Do we get to cut the ribbon on that one?
Yeah, but you have to take that up with operations.
All right.
Visual flush. Yeah, inaugural flush. Mr. Chair, I'll move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two five zero four four to E K C Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
I second the motion.
Okay, you heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. And our final item under unfinished business is the award of bid two five zero four five, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Field Services Chiller and Pump Replacement Project twenty twenty-five. And Procurement received eight bids for this project, and our evaluation team has completed the review and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Okay, you can read the letter.
Sure. It's a letter dated April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two five zero four five. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two five zero four five to Acco Engineering Systems as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay. All right, any questions? Discussion, hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the evaluation team's recommendation and award bid two five zero four five to Acco Engineering Systems in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have one resolution that was moved to the EMS open business meeting, and we have one resolution. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number three zero nine zero, resolution adjusting Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the Ada County Juvenile Services Budget. Anyone here wish to speak on that? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number three zero nine zero and accept a motion.
I'll move to approve R F P two five zero three one, Ada County Jail Case Management, oh, sorry, resolution number three zero nine zero, resolution adjusting Ada County budget.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion to approve, resolution number three zero nine zero. Is there any more questions or issues? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Well, procurement.
Yes.
Busy guy.
Hey, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, under new business this morning, we have two items. First of which is opening of R F P two five zero three one, the Ada County Jail and Case Management System. And we received fifteen proposals for this project. And Robin's got our bonfire e-procurement system all queued up. If you're ready for us to open.
Is there a max number of proposals?
There is not.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
It's going to be a lot of good reading for some evaluators here.
Yeah, good.
So, just a little bit about this project, Mr. Chairman. This is an R F P for the development and purchasing of an advanced jail management and case management system for the Ada County Jail. This is a fairly complex system that will combine the J M S and the C M S into one platform for seamless integration between the two systems. All right, so there are fifteen proposals up there. So, go ahead and read these into the record. We have three sixty-five labs, A T I M S, autonomy today LLC doing business as Cadmus. We have Three Sixty Five Labs, A T I M S, Autonomy Today L L C, doing business as Cadmus, Beacon Software Solutions Incorporated, Central Square Technologies L L C, Circular Incorporated, C and T Info Tech Corporation, Equibon Corrections, Executive Information Services Incorporated, Harris Corrections Solutions, Info Jenny Incorporated, MyCase, Plan Street, Stack Intelligence, Tyler Technologies. Is there any more, Robert? That's all of them?
No, that's all.
Okay, those are our fifteen proposers. The evaluation team will need sufficient time to evaluate these proposals and to conduct demonstrations. And as such, we would like to request this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the July eighth, two thousand twenty-five open business meeting.
Is that enough time?
I hope.
For fifteen, give me six.
Seven, eight, okay. All right, any questions? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table RFP two five zero three one to the July eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting to allow them to evaluate the fifteen proposals.
I'll second that. Okay. Motion is to table RFP two five zero three one to July the eighth, open business meeting. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our final item under new business is the review of bids received and award recommendation for Public Works Projects fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. And this is for bid two five zero four seven, the Ada County Juvenile Services Exhaust Family Placement Project. And this project, we received five responses, and we would like to submit this letter of the bids received and a recommendation for your consideration.
Okay.
It's a letter dated April twenty second, two thousand twenty-five, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two five zero four seven. Dear members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received five responses for bid two five zero four seven. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Bidder number one, Echo Engineered Systems with a total bid amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Bidder number two, Atlas Heating and Air L L C with a total bid amount of fifty-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Bidder number three, Intelligent Design Mechanical Solutions with a bid amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Bidder number four is R M Mechanical with a bid of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. And bidder number five is T V R Incorporated with a bid amount of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. After reviewing the bids submitted, it's a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two five zero four seven to T V R Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Okay. Is there any questions? Motion, I'll accept the motion.
Just as a comment, clearly Ada County is a responsible organization. Doing this kind of numbers, interested in bidding, so I think that's a testament to
Sure.
the county and procurement in particular.
Thank you.
So if you're ready for
Yeah, we're in for a motion, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we approve bid number two five zero four seven to T V R, grant it to T V R Incorporated for forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-two cents, twenty-eight cents.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, now we're dealing with operations, change order number two, Ada County Jail Chiller and Air handler replacement. Looks like we're changing the completion date.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we received a letter from the contractor that outlined some delivery times. It got moved to mid-June. It's the carrier crew. So we're adjusting the contract to allow for that delivery and for the installation. No fault to the contractor, pretty straightforward, just adjusting the date.
Okay, any questions or discussion from the board? Hearing none, I will accept the motion.
I'll move to approve Change Order Two as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, now we have Clerk's Office up. We have the Deputy Clerk here today.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Commissioners, good morning. Brief update for the Clerk's Office today. As we previously mentioned, certain triples really started digging deep into the F Y twenty-six budget. Since we all know it takes a lot of folk to get to that approval, but ultimately, we know in the end we'll have a budget that we think the taxpayers can trust and know that we'll be able to continue to do the services that we set forth with as a county as fiscally sound as possible. I also want to get two really important shout-outs.
As possible, it is fiscally sound.
Correct, correct. And two important shout-outs. One is to our Recorders Department. They're now in week two of operating in their new Tyler Technology Eagle Recording System. Nine months of project management, and they're saying that they're now hitting smoother waters, which is great. So we can now serve the public the way we like to serve the public. As you can imagine, on a project like that, though, there's been more pitfalls and setbacks and stress than you could ever imagine. But Director Heather Luther and team have done a phenomenal job. And last but not least is our Elections Department. We're mind-blowing to me to think that we're within thirty days of a consolidated election. May twentieth is right around the corner. They are continuing to set the standard of elections, and they're doing it in a facility that is in a massive remodel. So it's been a lot of moving of cheeses, if you will, and here they are, up for the challenge. So shout-out to those two teams. Thank you, sir.
Are you still expecting a robust seven percent turnout?
That is the expected turnout, Chairman, yes, seven percent.
And lots of ballots going on.
It's all said and done, we should have about twenty thousand ballots to count, technically.
Okay, well, thank you. Anything else? Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, just as for the public to explain, because there is a lot of construction over there, but they will still, the public, will still be able to view and participate in the way they've always been in terms of viewing election processes, et cetera, correct?
Chairman, Commissioner Daly, good question. The one slight change that they will see is for early voting. We typically house this in our early voting room that you know. Due to the construction, we can't accommodate that, so we will be doing the two weeks of early voting out in our trailer. So that'll be a small shift, but many of our voters are familiar with our trailer. That team's dialed in. We will still have our logistics and accuracy test that's coming up. The public will be there. We will have the opportunities for folks to make sure our equipment's working properly. Or, sorry, the press will be there throughout some of the press releases, some of the public listens, and then up through election day night. So despite a lot of jackhammers and noises going on in the background, we will be functioning pretty seamlessly.
Just wanted to make sure that the public knew if they go over there and look, they can still do the normal processes, just don't be intimidated by the fact of there's yet construction and stuff there. Everything will still be smoothly going along.
Chairman, Commissioner, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion or questions from the board? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Claims Journal. I will accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
Go ahead.
I'll authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Next up, we have Personnel Actions. I will accept the motion on Personnel Actions.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the table.
Second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Treasurers Office, we have with this our Districts Treasurers.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Just wanted to let you know that our hard-working team has us completely caught up on tax cancellations or adjustments. The reason that is important is because in a few weeks, we will be sending reminder notices for the second half due. So this is any amounts owing on the bills that we sent last November. So we're, in our world, I know the Clerk's Office is looking into F Y twenty, well, we're all looking into F Y twenty-six. In terms of property taxes, we're still back in twenty twenty-four. So we'll be sending those notices in a few weeks. And then that also involves really looking at our data. As you know, ownership changes, mortgage companies change. So making sure that we're prepared to send those notices in a few weeks. And then we'll also be opening our Cloverdale facility towards the end of May, which is always a huge success. I know the public really appreciates the opportunity to have walk-in service, in person, out on that side of the campus. So we look forward to opening that as well. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions?
Mr. Chairman, how are you notifying people at Cloverdale? Because I've had a lot of constituents actually appreciate the fact that it's there, that they found it and they appreciate going, if they want to do it in person, they don't want to drive all the way down here, so. How are you notifying people?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly, we notify them. Within that reminder notice that we send, there is an insert. And the insert lists the date that we opened that facility and then also the additional drop boxes we have. So it's provided both on the face of the notice and on an additional insert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
We've got a contract approval coming up for auctioning off tax-deed property, the hotel. Big hotel, I think it's probably the biggest tax deed we've done since I've been here. But how's that going? I saw it's twelve thousand dollars cost to get that auctioned. If that gets redeemed the day before the auction, do we still have to pay the money? And just in general, how's that going?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly, excuse me, Davidson. I don't think the date is set yet for the auction. So typically, what happens at an auction like that is the board will set the minimum bid to recoup all taxes and costs. And then if there are any excess proceeds, I want to make clear the county does not retain any of those proceeds. It has gone to, the recouped taxes go to the taxing districts, and the county only keeps the amounts to cover their costs and fees. So no other updates at this time until we get closer to getting ready to publish notice of the auction and conduct that auction.
Do we have a pretty good sense of who the owner is? Because I think there's some litigation going on about who owns it, or?
Yeah, I can't talk to the litigation part. I'm not sure about that. There is an owner of record, and that owner would have been given notice of the pending tax deed and also given notice of that hearing to present evidence and to testify at that hearing.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have
Chairman? Yes, just a reminder that our treasurer is the coordinator for the county for the two fifty celebration of the Declaration of Independence that we started last Friday with Paul Revere's Ride, and we're gonna be celebrating it for the next year and a half, actually. Twenty twenty-six, starting in July of twenty twenty-six, when the Declaration of Independence. So she is the coordinator. If you have any questions, go to her. She will, there's a lot of information on the website, et cetera, so.
Yes. There was an event last Friday at the Capitol where there were engagement from the community, the Boise State University String Quartet, some Opera Idaho performances. I understand there was also a reading of Paul Revere's Ride by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow. So a lot of upcoming events, and as I get more information, I'll be sure to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Expo Idaho. We have an interim event and some commercial exhibits. Any question or discussion on any of the contracts from Expo Idaho? Hearing none, I will accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda for Expo Idaho, Western Idaho Fair, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, next we have Parks and Waterways. We have three agreements. Any question or discussion on these agreements? Parks and Waterways. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the Parks and Waterways agreements for the Education and Bed Center as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, now we have ten agreements to approve. Any questions or discussion on any of these agreements?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I had a question. What is Field Exploration Services and Moisture Density Relationship Lab Test?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I can answer that question. Herb, the director of the landfill, and his team are exploring the possibility of expanding the scale house, adding another lane to increase the capacity of trucks that can go through there. We engaged with TerraCon, which does soil sampling, to go out and do pot-holing in the proposed area. They give us a lab test. It helps determine engineering criteria for the design. And basically, it's for feasibility to determine whether or not we have suitable soils and the necessary subbase to perform the project according to what he wants. Yeah, science.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion or issues to discuss? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have Weekly Indigen Items. I'll accept the motion on the Weekly Indigen Items.
I move to approve the Weekly Indigen Item as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we have two miscellaneous items. One's Workers' Compensation Stipulation Agreement for a partial lump-sum settlement and order of approval and discharge of the case. I'll accept the motion.
Do we want to have staff just sort of address that first for the record?
Well, I don't see we have any lawyers here.
Well, they mentioned to us last time that we should discuss something before we vote on it, but
Well, okay, you want to have any discussion on it? It's a small lump-sum settlement, and it's workers' compensation, and we are self-insured. And I don't know, if you want to say something else, go ahead.
No, that's all for me.
Okay. All right, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the Workers' Compensation Stipulation Agreement for partial lump-sum settlement and order of approval and discharge for case number I C number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one seven three five.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 And then we have the Quick Claim deed to authorize the issuance of Quick Claim deed. Could you give us an update on that one?
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to, if you'd like. This is an old tax-deed property. We got notified by the title company that this little blue strip blocked foreclosure sale that they were doing on this property in Kuna. And so we reached out to them, reached back out to them and told them that they have to pay a spare market value, which was eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. They have done that, and so this settles that. And now the person has access from the street to their house, to the property they just purchased.
Well, I need to have ingress, egress.
That's it, now they've got it.
I got it, okay. So I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the Quick Claim deed for parcel number R five zero seven zero 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 three zero three zero as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Is there any other business need to be brought before the board? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you. Well, good morning. Today is the twenty-second day of April, the time is nine forty-eight. The board is in session acting as the board of eighty county emergency medical services district for its open business meeting. All three commissioners are present, we also have with us for the record.
Alex McMurray.
Ask he brought for Commissioners, oh.
John Blake, Communications.
IT guy?
John Blake, apparently.
John Blake. Uh, clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are.
Okay. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to amend the agenda to add resolution three zero eight eight to the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay.
This was moved from the Commissioners' agenda.
It's moved from the Commissioners' agenda to emergency medical. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll, I'll approve, I'll approve, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have public hearing, I'll open the public hearing on resolution three zero eight nine, adjusting the eighty county budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the eighty county emergency medical services district. Where do we get all the extra money?
Oh, that was a insurance payment from one of our ambulances that went in an accident.
Okay, all right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve resolution three zero eight nine, as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, next we have resolution number three zero eight eight, resolution providing for the sale of five vehicles. We're selling some used ambulances?
They are.
Okay.
Uh, obsolete, and, and at some point, you just stop repairing them.
Yep, okay.
Uh, there, I, I think there's one non ambulance in there as well.
Oh, okay. All right, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number three zero eight eight and accept the motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number three zero eight eight as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any other discussion? Pretty good discussion and explanation, so all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Next up, the claims journal, I'll accept the motion on the claims journal.
I move to approve the EMS claims journal for April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. You've heard the motion, is there further any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, we have personnel actions, I'll accept a motion on the personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we have three agreements, any question or discussion on any of the agreements? Hearing none.
What's, what's the earpieces for field staff, noise canceling earpieces for field staff?
Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, the, the agreement is about lending of a new earpiece that is more robust and resilient. We have some in-ear pieces that we have used previously, they just don't last as long, and so we're trying something new. And, and in the lending, they wanted an agreement. We'll try them, and then if it works out, then we'll make purchase.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the three agreements as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, now we have our AMS update.
Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I believe that most of the things that are noteworthy found their way into the agenda items. And many of the other things that I might update you on are things that you've heard before. The only entertaining thing is that we did actually make a change order to the manufacturer of two of our ambulances that are going to come to us in safety yellow instead of white, which is, yeah, it, it's entertaining to me, too. Twenty-five years of white ambulances that people apparently don't see, and now we're going to turn them into something they do.
Well, that'd be shocking.
Shocking enough that, that they, they see us and
See us.
Stop running into us.
Well, that'd even be better.
Yeah, indeed.
Yeah.
That's all I have for you.
Okay, any other questions?
That, that's an official, emergency yellow is an official yellow?
Yeah, maybe not safety yellow, emergency yellow. I irritate the people I work with by calling it chartreuse, as I've told you before, they, they don't like that, and so I keep doing it.
Okay. All right, well, tell your staff, we appreciate the work you do and.
I suppose I do have one thing.
Okay, sure.
The, the only thing is that it's not necessarily an update, but for you to know, again, that very recently, a, a pretty noteworthy event that potentially happened to land itself in the news or in the paper. And I, I continue to be pleased and proud of what our folks do every day, they really are called into action to do things that others don't. And, and I'm, I'm not looking for thanks on their behalf necessarily. But I wanted to, to update you again, just because sometimes things come to the fore and they come to my consciousness during a, a day, how our folks have done well under pretty extreme stress. And, and so they're out there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, doing the things for eighty county, and I continue to be appreciative.
Well, yeah, and so does this board, and we wish you would convey that to your staff, we appreciate the work they do for the community.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, unless there's anything else, we'll adjourn. Thank you, we're adjourned.